Okay, let's go. I'm not in the control these days. Okay, everybody, let's get this show on the road. Good evening and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Study Session for September 10, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I ask everyone to please mute your cellphones and other electronic devices, and I'll ask Rob to do a roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Trustee Dolman?
Here.
Trustee Alvinson?
Here.
Trustee Dearborn?
Here.
Trustee Handler?
Here.
Trustee Ursick?
Here.
Trustee Apitoff?
Here.
President Rents?
Here.
Okay, item two is public comment, and this is the time of the evening where anyone who wishes to can come on up to the podium in the middle and share your thoughts with us on anything tonight that's not on the agenda. So if you're here for the stormwater study, please hold your comments until we get to that part of the meeting. Okay, I have three speakers signed up this evening. First one is Katie, Katie Stevens.
Haven't been here in a while. Don't start my time yet. I want you to know with water levels going down, there are signs up for the Park District that say "on the horizon." I want you to know there will be no horizon north or south. We will not see Waukegan. We will not see Gilson Beach. We will have tremendous rock, cement, and steel, and it is not, in my opinion, what's minimally necessary, which is what your job is. That is my first point. My second point is, I really would like a helipad ordinance, and I'd like it sooner than later. I think you all got my letter, did you? I sent it to Rob, and it came hopefully to all the trustees I asked it to. It had four main points: safety, noise and nuisance, disruption to the neighborhoods, disruptive if we were to have many helicopters. This is just my opinion, and I have to be careful how I say this, but it seems like an attorney could find a way around this rule unless it becomes an ordinance quickly. And I'm getting older and wiser, and I think we need to be ahead of the game and not behind it. So I'm asking you to consider that strongly in your executive session, and I'm happy to give you what I wrote as an ordinance, and I'm happy to provide that to you. I believe also that the ordinance is only in residential, but Rob and I are going to meet next week with David Shune so I understand what the current ordinance. It has five criteria, but I believe if you have multiple properties, you could still designate one as a potential helipad-only property. So if we have people with multiple properties, I don't want them to designate one as a helipad property. And if you recall, the Park District asked to become institutional use for the parks, and that would give them total autonomy, and it's currently zoned residential, and we are a residential neighborhood with all five of our lakefront parks. So I'd like you to understand, I have any information that you'd like, and I'd be happy to discuss it. My third request is stay ahead of the game, and I want to say, I think you guys have done a really good job so far of trying to put in the ordinances that protect our land, which is the only thing I've done in this village for 40 years, and leave it better than we found it. And that is, I have no financial gain, I have no financial interest, but I want you to have an ordinance that monitors Lake Michigan and a village ordinance that during construction on the lake, water quality for construction is monitored and protected by an independent company. I cannot stress "independent" enough. We need to help protect our lake. It is our greatest resource, and I want independent water samples from an independent source weekly from the village to keep our water clean and safe. And the code would work with the IEPA. I want you to know, I've called 15 times, and I've sent many, many emails to a man named Darren Gov. I'll just tell you, I've never received a call back. I've asked. The only way to get a water quality sample is if I personally place a...my name on a violation, and I'm not willing to do that, but I think you guys should have that authority, not me as an independent person, because I don't want to accept that liability. And I'm not...it's not a liability, it's the...it's that it should be a code so that it is done properly. And I've also written both...I've written all of these to the best of my ability. I'm not a lawyer, I play one on TV, and if you'd like a copy of anything I've written, I'd be more than happy to give it to you, but I think we need to continue to stay ahead of the game. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katie. I assume this is Ted Winanshanko?
Yeah, that's me. Don't worry, I'm going to torture another board that don't know me with the whole...whether a name is required. Hi. So, I wanted to speak briefly. No paper today. I realize, I've been considering my comments from last time, and while I believe my comments are completely valid and speak to a structure and a governance that is flawed and problematic, a village that gives away public land, hides information from its citizens, among other things, I realize that perhaps I cast my net too widely at the last meeting. I was thinking back on the last 15 or so years that we've lived here and to prior councils and their leadership, and it occurred to me that we talk about this being a council-manager type of government. I don't think that that's really true. I think examples from prior administrations would bear this out, that it really is more a president-manager form of government. Certainly, the council has some voice, but that voice is directed and limited by leadership. And I also feel that while it would be nice for everyone to be incredibly principled and accept full responsibility for everything they do, I also understand that for a lot of people, it can be difficult to stand up to power and risk their livelihood. So last week, when I cast this wa...last month, when I cast this wide net, I really think that that was perhaps improper. I think that perhaps the council really doesn't know the fact that the village doesn't want the violation...by the way, there is really no violation, we can talk about that. But the council probably doesn't even know that the village has refused to dismiss the case for an agreement for me not to re-enter the construction site, although there is no construction site ordinance on the books, but instead wants to take this further. I don't understand why the village wants to waste my money on something like this, but perhaps there are reasons that aren't apparent to the public at large. And so perhaps the council shouldn't be held to the same degree of complicity in that. The same point, I don't know exactly where I should...where I should put village staff. I mean, it's clear from emails that village staff has lied to the residents of this village. I mean, they've said untruths, and then when those untruths have been pointed out to them, there's been silence. And it would have been nice if those people could have also stepped forward and corrected their errors, but they have not. So there's perhaps some degree of complicity there. But ultimately, I believe, just like in prior administrations here, it all boils down to just one person who's in charge.
Thanks again for your kind words, Ted. Third person up is Christine Coda.
Good evening. In June of 2023, the village passed ordinances that govern zoning over lakefront property and then promptly placed a nine-month moratorium on lakefront construction activities to study this and do it right. More than a year after passing these ordinances, the village is not prepared in staffing or resources. These projects are urgent. Elder and Centennial beaches are dynamic assets, fully exposed to the risks of weather and high water, and are well past their repair dates, while land-based real estate projects can withstand lengthy deliberation. Beaches and bluffs demand maintenance and protection. The village conducted excellent study sessions on January 10, 2023, and September 12, 2023 that are specific to Winnetka, current, and these are the only studies that should be used in relevant reference materials. I offered permit packets to each of you trustees in November 2023 and had three conversations in December of 2023 to explain the evolution of our plans after two years of public comment and revisions. Finally, we were allowed to submit permit applications for Centennial Beaches' repair, protection, and ADA access plans on April 3, 2024. Five months later, we still have not had an audience with any advisory committee to review our permit application, and furthermore, have been advised that the advisory process must now be sequential with a completed recommendation from each advisory board before moving forward to the next. Nowhere is this written in your policies or procedures. We were denied an appearance at the September 9 zoning board of appeals meeting with full attendance because David Shune would be on vacation, and Ann Clausen, who's a 10-plus-year veteran of this department, was not deemed an acceptable substitute. Then we were assigned a special meeting on September 24, which has now been canceled because only a bare quorum of four out of seven, which is still a legal quorum, was able to attend. We have been rescheduled for October 14. We are all volunteers, and I fully appreciate the efforts that all of you are making to improve Winnetka. But the citizens of Winnetka expect timely and professional consideration of all zoning applications, as does the Winnetka Park District. You created the rules, it's time to deliberate on projects that fall under them. The citizens of Winnetka are waiting to use their beaches. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Would anybody else like to speak? Come on up, Chuck.
I'm Viana.
He doesn't look like Ryan.
That's right, sorry. Yeah, so people can see it. Okay. Thank you for taking the time to hear why these three documents here are important in the evaluation of Centennial Park's renovation with respect to providing access to public beachland. Guaranteeing public beachland is part of the public trust doctrine. These three documents have one geometry in common: the crossing of the steel sheetpile wall and 205 Sheridan Road's property line, marked in green that goes across both, all three of those documents. The sheetpile wall carries the dog beach fence, which cannot be penetrated by walking. Thus, the crossing describes a point at which there is no public passageway to reach the IDNR-required stairs across 205's groin to reach the public beach on the other side. CO2 on the left, over here, is from 205's permit, which has been approved by the village, and it shows that there is only some 2.5, 1.5 feet of open passageway between the dog beach fence and the sheetpile wall and 205's property line. C47, which is from the August 5 application of the Winnetka Park District for their SUP, shows only 5 to 2.5 feet are provided to reach the stairs. The two conflict with the width of passageway provided, as well as to where the stairs are located. You see the stairs located there and there. Okay. CO2 shows the stairs to be 3 to 10 feet shoreward of that crossing of those two lines, and the crossing in C147 shows the stairs to be 23 feet shoreward of that crossing line. I believe a new plaid of survey is required to resolve the differences between CO2 and C147. It does not contain the stairs. The plaid of survey over here, over here on the right, does not contain the stairs, which are a very important part of the public access. It is not known where the steel sheetpile wall was surveyed at all during this plaid of survey, because they're normally just defining the property limits. So that may not have even been surveyed by the person, and the property line is drawn. You can see how thick it is, maybe feet wa...maybe...
Which one?
This one over here. It may be feet wide itself, and therefore you can't tell where it actually crosses the sheetpile line. So these are difficult things that can be resolved easily by another plaid of survey. I don't think it requires that this application review process be delayed, because that can be obtained while this is going forward. So secondly, the Winnetka Park District should be required to ask for a variance to ordinance 15.78.08, because C147 over here shows that it does not provide sufficiently wide passageway to the IDNR stairs within the bounds of Centennial Park. In other words, this pathway here, 5 to 2.5 feet, is less than the six feet that was negotiated with the village engineer during the...during the engineer's comments number 11 in the application itself. The six feet was mentioned as what was necessary for a safe passageway. 5 and 2.5 are less than six. This, again, asking the Park District to ask for a variance does not impede the applications' review process. There's nothing wrong with asking for a variance, because a variance can be discussed by all these committees. I see that doesn't hinder this at all. Lastly, locating the dog beach fence on the sheetpile groin abrogates the public trust doctrine and the IDNR administrative law requiring public access to public land. With the fence on the groin, the CO2...
Which groin?
Well, the fence on the groin here. And the CO2 document allows the 205 Sheridan Road to request the Winnetka Police Department to cite any person on the groin stairs for trespass by walking outside the minuscule 1.5 feet of space there is to get to the stairs. And we already know that the Winnetka Police Department cites people for trespass. So, you know, I don't think these requests should...will impede the application review process, and I think that they are necessary for actually to settle what exactly is the passageway that's provided to the IDNR-required stairs to public land. Thank you very much for listening to this. I could give you a copy of these notes. Well, I...that's what I'm prepared to say.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you very much for listening.
I'm hoping you understand that it's important that this is the sort of information that gets synthesized at the advisory boards.
I tend to present that to each one of them...
Good.
...as well as to the Park District itself, because I think that they need to know this as well. They could ask for a variance, as you've pointed out to me.
And I'm hoping the Park District takes note of this and be...and is ready to respond when it comes up in conversation at that time, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've never seen it, so I pointed to whatever I thought it was.
My name's Dan Waters, current school board president, and I just want to first thank you for your time. I know that as a volunteer body, we're all in this together, so to speak, but would like just to take a moment tonight to address the council on behalf of the school board. We had a facilities subcommittee meeting this morning, and we...one of the topics we addressed was part of your consent agenda from last week in the issue sort of that remains in the unremedied Crow Island school property. You know, we have been in communication since early June, noting the presence of significant shards of glass on the reconstructed berm on the south side of Crow Island as it runs parallel to the...to Mount Pleasant Street. Obviously, this is an area that was part of the stormwater project that impacted both the schools as well as the Park District property. We've had numerous conversations and email exchanges between the district and village, and the issue is still there, and it is still unresolved, and it is still dangerous. I think notable...it's notable that our IGA on the topic dictates that the berm must be returned in effect to its previous state, including clean topsoil. As we have shared, it's currently not the case, and right now, we have a berm that has topsoil with significant glass in it. And we've got a number of community members who have gifted me numbers of pieces. I have plenty for my...for...to share as well, but to be clear, it's not an isolated incident. You know, I shared with you that I had picked it up within one spot. It is pervasive throughout the berm. So we have been working, I know, in alignment with the IGA to solve this issue, but yet we have yet to be presented with a comprehensive plan that both solves the immediate issue and also gives us comfort that we have a long-term solution in place. The sod approved as part of the change order consent agenda item last week would certainly cover...would certainly cover the issue, but we really need assurances that we will not then eventually have glass permeating through the grass in the spring or in years to come. So at the direction of the school board, I've asked Dr. Test to evaluate options, and we are hiring an outside expert to identify what the best approach is for the durable solution to ensure, and we will share that once we receive it. In the meantime, for clarity, we've instructed Bullion Andrews to erect a fence around the property in order to protect students, as well as community who walk through the area. I think it's super clear that I...look, I know that you face myriad issues way more than is possible to solve at any given time, but on behalf of the school board, you know, I would ask certainly for your support as we get to an agreed-upon solution, so we can get this to be both a safe and a satisfactory solution. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. And just so everybody's clear, we're not running away from this problem at all. I mean, it's something that came up during the course of construction, it's been brought to our attention. Of course, there's always a scramble to figure out what the quick fix might be, and once it became clear that the problem was a little bit more pervasive, you know, we're going to stand up and do what's right.
Appreciate it.
So.
Thank you.
That's all I can say on that for now. I know the staffs will be working closely together, and they'll come up with a solution that works. Anybody else, as long as we're going? Okay, I'll close public comment, and now we'll get on to the main course for the evening. Okay, item three tonight is the East Side Stormwater Evaluation and Council Update. Earlier this year, village council authorized the stormwater management study and alternatives for eastern Winnetka. Tonight is the first scheduled check-in with village council focusing on the elder sub watershed Before I have Mike take over, I just want to add a few comments here. Been a lot of chatter out in the community about various issues of involvement with the village and the Park District, and I was hoping to at least set straight some of the incorrect things that are floating around out there in town. First off, I...we've taken a pummeling on the fact that back last fall, probably late November, early December, I expressed hopefulness to the Park District that we would have some data for them by June of this year. July. That didn't happen. Why didn't it happen? Because we...we had a little bit of a delay getting our RFPs out for our consultants. When the...when the proposals came through, they were all over the place, and we simply were not going to rush and waste public money making a bad decision on such an important project. So we took the time to drill down, sent staff back to re-level the bids and bring some answers back to us, and we finally made a determination that Strand Associates was the appropriate outfit to move the study forward for us. They were told at the beginning of their assignment that they were to focus on this elder watershed, because it was important to the Park District, and we had committed to helping them finalize their designs on the outfall. That information is now available. Christina, sorry. You know, we're all volunteers, stuff doesn't always work the way it is, but we don't need to be out in the street talking negatively about each other, because that isn't the case. Secondly, we've been accused of slow-rolling the SUP process, and I'm very upset about that, because, yes, the original package did come in some time ago, but it was also deficient in many, many ways, and we were receiving a lot of questions on the application as it came through, too. A decision was made that we would try to make this package as complete as possible and to get all the information in there so you all could get a fair hearing with all the facts on the table included in your application. Not having it dragged out at the meeting and going through six or seven plan commission meetings scrambling to get information that we could have had on the table at the very beginning. So while it seems like we might be slow-rolling it, we're really trying our best to make sure that we have a good, complete package that our advisory boards and the public can look at and understand the truth about the projects that you're projecting. It's nothing to do with slow-rolling the project. We have plenty of work in front of us here, we understand that, but at the same time, running around telling people that we're slow-rolling this thing for some unknown reason is beyond me, and it's unnecessary. It just creates more concern in the community and more chatter, and it hardens the battle lines so that people can't talk to each other and come to good compromise. So if you want us to rush it, that's fine. You'll get in, you'll get your first meeting, and then the drag will begin, and it won't be anything that you can lay on the village, because it'll be that particular board. So to me, it makes more sense to come completely repaired and ready to go with all the questions to answer. You just had another one tonight. I don't know the answer to that, and obviously, you will have to provide answers for that. So these are the sort of things that we're trying to get rolled in and on the table so we can have good, productive conversations on what it is you all are proposing. So I'm sorry that it's taken longer. I seem to remember seven, eight years ago, where we basically set our stormwater back two years because of a change in Park District policy, and never once did I come to a microphone or go out in the street and tell everybody that the Park District was dragging us out. It happens. We're all trying to make the best project for this community, and that takes time, and it takes time to hear what people's various opinions are and try to find solutions that integrate them all. And I'm hoping that's the way this...this will go forward in the future. And Chuck, you send us a lot of emails, but you know what? It's not the right time, and it's not the right place. It's the Park District's application, and what you gave them tonight, I believe, was a helpful piece of information that they should think about and have answers for when they finally do show up. And lastly, with respect to delaying the meeting yet again, this is probably one of the most important projects that's come through this village since stormwater, and to send this through on an advisory commission with only four of the seven members in attendance is just not acceptable for something this important. I mean, if we were talking about six inches on a playground installation, that might be one thing, but we're not. We're talking about a major improvement to two large beaches here in this community, and people have a lot of opinions on them. So we want to make sure that the process is good, clean, and fair so that the right outcomes are achieved when it finally gets to village council and we have the opportunity to vote. That's all I got for tonight. Okay, so we now have Mike Waldron, who's going to tell us all about all the hard work they've been doing since they were awarded the contract and give us some information on what we're looking at, particularly with the elder beach outfall.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. I'm Mike Waldron with Strand. Been working with you on the west side for a while, and I really appreciate the opportunity to work on the east side and been looking forward to sharing what we've been doing for the last few months on this stormwater management study. Just a quick background from a scope standpoint, we have started, obviously, ramping up the project, gathering the background information. The big gist here is that we have been re-establishing existing conditions, previous studies from 2011, 2012, previous modeling, that kind of stuff. We have been doing the update to make sure that what we're working with reflects current day conditions. And then we moved into doing some comprehensive inventory, source identification, which is figuring out exactly where does the flooding come from. We know the flooding problem. The key here is to figure out where's the flooding coming from, so we can attack that as opposed to just trying to inoculate a problem. And as was noted, we have centered down into the elder area from our study standpoint, and so I want to share with you some of the alternatives we've been looking at, some of the opportunities that we've identified. But I am going to take a step back, because I want to make sure that everybody knows where we're looking. This figure right here shows the major water features in the village of Winnetka. You've got, obviously, Lake Michigan on the east. You also have the Skokie River lagoon system in the north branch on the west. And I bring this up because Winnetka is very unique in that there is a continental drainage divide that runs through the village. If you're not aware of that, there's about 1,600 acres of the village flows to the west into the Skokie Lagoons, which eventually goes down to the Illinois River, the Mississippi River, out to the Gulf of Mexico. You have about 890 acres that flows to the east to Lake Michigan, which flows through the Lake Michigan chain of lakes to the St. Lawrence Seaway and out to the Atlantic Ocean. So you have this interesting continental divide running through the community, which is very important from a study standpoint. You usually don't go beyond continental or jump over continental divides. You usually don't go beyond continental or jump over continental divides. This study in particular is focused on the eastern side of Winnetka, the Lake Michigan watershed shown here in this kind of hazy blue coloring. And in particular, this is the exhibit that was in the report that was submitted for tonight. This is showing the area, the eastern side of Winnetka. You can see that it is, I'll slow down, I'm on slide six. You're good? You with me? Okay. And it shows that it's been broken into four sub areas. Elder Lane on the south, Elm Spruce, and then Hubbard Woods on the north. And as I noted, we have started our investigation primarily in the elder, but we have also gotten into the other study areas also. You'll notice the stars on the figure, those are all existing outfalls. The village has eight existing storm sewer outfalls to Lake Michigan, and those are critical in this study. Those are obviously the points that we are studying and taking a look at and trying to see how we can improve those outfalls to the lake. So as I noted, we've established the background, we've established the modeling, we've calibrated the modeling back to the historic event of June 2011. And so we have a working model. And then we have centered in on the elder area where we've done some comprehensive investigations, and I'm looking forward to sharing, sharing with you some of the things that we have found. So this exhibit here, this is slide 10, this is showing the elder lane sub area, and this is the modeling for a 100-year storm event. Generally, a 100-year storm event is a pretty good place to start. Now, you might take that as meaning that's an event that'll happen only 100, every 100 years, and everybody here knows that that's not the case. 2008, 2011, 2013, we had a few of them. It really just means the probability of this storm is 1% in any given year. It's a rare storm, but it is a strong storm, and it's one you've seen. And what's most important about this is it starts to show us or confirm for us some of the things we already knew. Slide 11 calls out to you some of the significant flooding areas that you have during that significant, that type of significant event. The pedestrian underpass at Sunset Road, Winnetka Avenue Viaduct, and Fuller Lane are three places that get hit especially hard. You can see the red coloring in there that represents over three feet of flooding in that, in those locations. But you'll also note that there are some intersections like Sunset Road and Fairview Avenue and Orchard Lane where we're in the oranges. The oranges are showing me. I'm, slide, I'm sorry. I'm on 12. I'll call that out as I go forward. In any event, there is significant flooding in the roadways. Now, this doesn't, we haven't really seen property damage per se here. There's, there's reports of flooding on properties, but it is a real concern from a roadway passability standpoint and a safety standpoint, being able to get emergency vehicles through roadways that could potentially have two feet of flooding. All this said, these are the kinds of things that the modeling has helped us to pinpoint where the problem areas are, and as I noted, our desire now is to figure out why are they happening? And so one of the things we looked at is we went back from 100-year event to a two-year event. So slide 13 shows you that two-year storm event. Now, two-year event, you could say, is an event that's going to happen every two years. It really is an event that has a 50% chance of happening in any given year. You see these events all the time. And you can see from that exhibit, you have these same flooding locations all the time. So this isn't something that just pops up every 100 years. This is something that you deal with every year. And that, what that tells us is that there are significant issues happening up in the watershed that is creating these problems. And I'll tell you how we, how we noted that. One of the tasks we had on our scope was to go back and to revisit some of the previous recommendations. So slide 14 shows you one of the major recommendations that was brought out in 2011. That was to run a large diameter storm sewer from the Elder Park or the Elder Lane outfall through the watershed out to the Winnetka Avenue underpass and into Green Bay Road. We're talking very large, 84-inch to 96-inch, which is a seven to eight-foot diameter storm sewer. And the concept makes sense. It's not something we don't often do. You make a big pipe and just try to get the water out of the neighborhood. But what's interesting is when we look at the modeling, it shows us something else is happening in the system. So what we did is we cut a section through this blue line and looked at it from the side that's creating a profile, and that's what's on sheet 15. The left side of this figure is Lake Michigan. You can see the bluff as I move from left to right up to Elder Beach. And you can see the storm sewer there. The storm sewer is shown in gray. That's the existing storm sewer. Just above it, you'll see that kind of EKG type of line. That's the ground surface above that storm sewer. And as we move from the left to the right, we're moving towards Nutria, we're moving out to the underpass. And on that figure is that dark, heavy blue line. That's a water surface. Now, this is early in the storm event. This could also represent a two-year storm event, but you see in this event, the storm sewer downstream has a lot of capacity in it. The gray is, is visible, the blue is very shallow, the water level is very shallow, but you are flooding at the underpass and you are flooding at Green Bay Road. What that tells me is running a large diameter pipe all the way out to Winnetka Avenue underpass isn't necessarily going to fix this problem. It might help me when I got 100-year event, sure, I've opened up the drainage and I can get it out to the lake, but your two-year events, it doesn't matter. I've got lots of capacity downstream. So part of our evaluation here is to say, what's going on upstream, where the Winnetka Avenue underpass is at, and how can I take advantage of capacity in the system? So again, as I said, that helps me on the two-year, but 100-year is a different case. If you look at slide 17, that's another profile. That's the end of the 100-year storm event, and you can see where the blue line is now. It's way up there at the ground surface. That's where the large diameters come into, into effect. But what we need to be able to do is to balance this out, find a medium between taking advantage of existing capacity, possibly rerouting flows. How do I cut down on the runoff up in the watershed to relieve flooding areas lower in the watershed? So I'm going to be tackling these major flooding areas, and I want to share with you some of the opportunities we've started to identify to do that, mainly looking at a spectrum of opportunities. I think in many presentations we've given to you, we've shared this exhibit. A lot of people will come to me and say, well, what about green infrastructure? Green infrastructure has its place. You can see that on the left side of this exhibit on sheet, on slide 19, but it really only helps you in the one-year, two-year level of event, and especially Winnetka's got very hardpaned clay, so we don't get a lot of infiltration into the soils in here. What we're looking at is the 100-year event, hopefully the July 2011 event. That requires much larger infrastructure, but we are not discounting anything at the bottom, at the middle, at the end of this spectrum. All of these things are on the table. And one of the biggest ones is storage. Sheet 20 shows you our first stab at trying to identify potential locations for storage. And if you've been in this sub area, you'll probably realize there are not a lot of opportunities for storage. It's open land that we're looking for. There's some property at the high school. We can work with Nutria on that. There's a property, Indian Hill Park, on the east side of the railroad, just north of Winnetka Avenue. There's property that the village owns along Green Bay Road. There's also a little pocket park there up on the north side. Those are opportunities. Those are potential open land opportunities that we've been assessing at this point. Now, on paper, Indian Hill looked really good to us. Wow, that's where our biggest flooding problem is at, is at the, is at the viaduct. But if you go out there and stand at Indian Hill, you're about seven to eight feet higher than the ground at the viaduct. The property, it doesn't pan out. I would have to excavate the park down eight feet before I even started to build any type of detention there, and it doesn't make practical sense, so Indian Hill's come off the table. But these other opportunities, which obviously narrows down our opportunities, but the opportunities are here that we want to start talking about. So along with storage, we've also started to look at some conveyance. If you go on to sheet 22, this is kind of a big picture of the conveyance in this sub area. Everything in the pastel colors gets to the Elder Lane outfall. That's the entire port, almost the entire watershed gets there. There's another outfall at Willow Road. It's fairly small, 12 or 18-inch, but it only takes drainage from the properties that are abutting Willow Road. But there's an opportunity there. There's a right-of-way there. It's limited in its capacity and its space, but there's an opportunity there. So I look at this and I see everything's trying to get to elder. Are there ways of, of modifying this? And I'm going to start up in the watershed first off. This is a little bit hard for me to show, but if you're looking at the exhibit and you're on the west side of the railroad tracks at Winnetka, at the Winnetka Avenue underpass, that entire pink area tries to get underneath the underpass, that entire drainage area. If you go to sheet 23, there's an opportunity to shave off a portion of that water, that drainage area and send it to the north. The village has an existing storm sewer underneath the railroad tracks at that point. If I could take some burden off of Winnetka Avenue, send drainage north on Green Bay Road to that existing crossing, I might be able to relieve some of the pressure at the underpass. Now, obviously, I need to evaluate the modeling. I want to make sure that doesn't impact upstream, doesn't impact downstream, but this is part of the balancing that we're trying to do within the upper part of the watershed. Slide 24 shows another concern area. This is Fuller Lane. Fuller Lane right now drains to Sheridan Road, and Sheridan Road has a very small storm sewer on it, only about an 18-inch diameter. We'd like to look at a way of changing the direction of flow from Fuller Lane and take it out towards, towards Essex Road if we can. And obviously, I had shown you earlier, there's potential for storage there. That might be a real benefit for Fuller Lane if I can identify some storage and I can do some conveyance improvements in this area to disconnect that community from the low-capacity storm sewer and get it to something with much more capacity in it. You'll remember from the profile I showed you, downstream of Nutria, there's capacity in that sewer. Another thing we've identified is on slide 25, you might be able, in the picture, you might not be able to see it very well, but pumping, pumping is generally something I'm not a fan of because pumping makes you go to bed at night knowing a storm's coming and wondering whether that pump station's going to work. You'll know on the west side, everything we have designed on the west side, none of it depends on pumping. Everything is designed that we can store it. If the pump stations fail, we don't have to lose sleep over it. But there are some instances where we might not be able to get away from pumping, and the underpass might be one of them. The elevation of the underpass is so low, trying to get something that can convey out and even storage, because I have to go below the underpass to get storage, starts to cause me a problem. So I'm pretty locked into an understanding that we will need to do some pumping at the Winnetka Avenue underpass, especially if we want to keep it dry. Some of the other things we'll talk about as we go forward is what is the level of protection we want to provide? Maybe 12 inches of flooding at the underpass is something we can live with. That's passable. And, and public works can certainly put up temporary signs that would keep lower cars out but still allow emergency vehicles. Those are the things that we're going to want to balance with the infrastructure that would be needed to keep it dry. But I'm pretty certain we're going to need to do pumping at the Winnetka Avenue underpass. The other thought we have is on sheet 26 is to disconnect that underpass from the rest of the watershed, because when the rest of the watershed starts to fill up with water, it does backflow into the underpass. So I, there's a possibility of disconnecting that and keeping it all on the west side of the railroad tracks. Again, we would probably look at doing that in balance with storage because I don't want to have to depend on pumping. But if I disconnect it, I would probably have to pump it. It's a, if I can get the area as small as possible, have enough storage for it, I can lay off the, the need for the pumping to be able to keep us dry. But these are some of the options that we're looking at to try to move flow around where there is capacity in the system. And then moving to the lower part of the watershed, this is sheet 28, and again, you'd seen this before, the Elder Lane outfall takes a majority of the watershed. So we have been doing a whole lot of, for lack of a better term, whack-a-mole, figuring out, can I take pieces and parts and move them away from Elder Lane? Can I relieve that outfall? Can I move things around? Here's one example on sheet 29. If I were to intercept this watershed at Woodland and, and elder and reroute it to Willow Road, I almost cut the outfall to Elder Lane in half. That's a significant reduction in the flow to Elder, the Elder Lane outfall. That's the point of balance that we're looking for. Is there an opportunity to balance these outfalls between a Willow Road, which is already an outfall, and Elder Lane and reduce the burden at the lake? And I'm going to share you, share with you one of the things that I think has some really, really good potential. This is on sheet 30. As I noted, everything gets to Sheridan and elder. If we were to intercept the flows at that location with a, with a splitter structure so that one storm sewer goes north to Willow and one storm sewer continues to go east at the Elder Lane outfall, if I set the Willow Road storm sewer just a little bit lower than the elder storm sewer, I might be able to intercept all of the one-year storm events, two-year storm events, maybe up to a 10-year storm event, and send that all to Willow as opposed to out to elder. What that would do for us is that probabilistic level on an annual basis, you might not have any outfall to the beach during storm events because most of it would go out to Willow. And that's a balance that we're looking to try to achieve here in the improvements up in the watershed and then down here in the lower part of the watershed. Now, one of the things that's been very helpful to us in the study, the park district did share with us their current plan for the storm sewer on the property. It is a 60-inch storm sewer in this location. Our modeling shows that is appropriate. That provides the same level of protection that you have from the existing storm sewer today, and the, what we want to capture after that would then go to Willow. Now, both of them would have to be necessary during a storm event, but what we're talking about is splitting those flows and what the park district is proposing with the 60-inch on their property, it works in the modeling that we're showing. We, we feel good with that. So I'm hoping that you've seen at this point that there's a lot of balancing going on. We are still in that process, trying to figure out, if I have this much storage and this much conveyance, how do they impact each other? Can I get more storage? Can I get less conveyance? But at this point, I think it's a time for us to engage the stakeholders, because if you've noticed the storage, not a lot of it is on village property. We have to bring partners into this and start talking to them. That'll help us to know how do some of the vision that we've seen here fit with what they're looking to do on their property? And that's generally where we're at, at this point, with the village council check-in in the scope of the project. We're looking to move forward to start to engage the stakeholders. What it'll also allow us to do is to start to engage on a higher level the regulatory agencies. We've had some discussions with them. We're getting a better idea as to what water quality means to them, but they're going to continue to ask us for magnitude, and we need to be able to start answering that question with them. And so those are the next steps that we're looking forward to. From a big picture, I thought we would share with you just what we see. This is my last slide here, is sheet 34, is what we see as a overall timeline. We are on schedule right now to wrap up this study in 2025 and the results of this study. Very similar, we're assuming, to what we worked through on the west side, 26, 27, working through development of intergovernmental agreements, working with the regulatory agencies to get commitments from them as to what they will be expecting from us. And the village is going to need to create a funding plan for this, for whatever comes out of the study. From there, you could see 28, 29, from engineering design, getting actual regulatory approvals, construction, and pursuing permits. We have every year pursued at least three or four big-scale permits, or I'm sorry, I should say funding grants. We're going to hit on one of them one of these days, I'm really hoping so, but we have to keep that process going, continue to bother them, and maybe a 20, 30 timeframe to be able to put something out in the street, to be able to develop something that comes out of the plan. So that's where we're at today. Happy to take any questions.
Well, I think Dan and Kelly are probably very pleased that they didn't see Greeley School on any of those slides, so we won't be knocking on your door anytime soon on the east side, so. Questions for Mike? Just jump in.
I was just going to ask a, a kind of a big contextual question. Mike, why the other three areas along Lake Michigan, the Elm Street area, Spruce Street, and Hubbard Woods area? We're not addressing, we're not looking at those, not an issue? What's?
No, we've actually, we have started looking at them, but we have zeroed in on elder to try to to try to get to what do we think is really gonna happen in Elder. We are in the process of studying those others, but I will also say they're not nearly as dynamic as Elder is. Some of the, some of the things we're seeing there, we've, there are some pretty clear ideas of how we might be able to go to attack those.
Elder is a bigger problem than the other three?
It has, it has more flooding.
Yep.
It has more extreme flooding. So the other ones aren't getting us three to six feet of flooding anyplace. There'll be intersection issues, passability issues. I think there, I think we noted, there are some property flooding areas in those, but it's not nearly as dynamic as Elder is.
Are those potentially projects that could be done coincidentally with this? Or are they just separate distinct 2035, 2040? You know, or how do we, how do we communicate with the other residents that have some water issues?
Bob, I think what the, what the idea was, was to complete the whole area study just like we did on the west side, and then probably just like we're doing now with storage, conveyance, and then, what do they call the hotspots? Areas of...
Hotspots.
Hotspots.
So we're talking Elder now?
I thought there was some technical name for that.
But we will be talking the other three districts, other areas as well as part of this study.
Trusty Dearborn, I-
Comprehensive project, but it'll be phased.
Yeah. I would expect we'd be checking in on the other watersheds with you as we go, as we go along, and plans or concepts-
Remember, the reason why Elder is on here is because of the urgency expressed by the Park District, and we wanted to help moving them along.
Yeah.
Right.
To answer to all the other residents.
Yeah.
You know.
Yes, we're gonna, as Mr. Van had indicated, we'll have future council check-ins. As we model those next areas, we'll come back and give an update just like this. And then at the end, we'll put together the comprehensive plan, and then we'll talk about what are the high priority locations and what are the lower ones, just like we had done for the west side, so same approach.
Jim, that timeframe we have up there, does that contemplate that?
Yes.
That that will include-
Yes.
The other areas.
So we'd have a similar check-in for the other areas like we're having tonight?
Yeah.
Chris.
Are we just getting a sneak peek about Elder?
About Elder.
But we're still working on the other ones?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I got some questions. And I know it's not our issue to solve, but I noticed on a couple of slides, there's a lot of flooding in Kennelworth. Like, if you look at 12, I'm assuming that's Kennelworth, right, on the 100-year slides. So it is a regional issue, right? And this, the water doesn't stop at the property line. If we solve, and I know there's more study to happen, so I'm not suggesting that we have all the answers right now, but one of the concerns I have is, you know, if we reroute, we start putting more water up Willow Road, is it just creating more capacity in our system to handle some of the flooding in Kennelworth? Or is this generally a lower-lying area to, you know, topography than the Kennelworth drainage shed? Have we looked at that? Are we thinking about that as more of a kind of big picture?
Yeah, we have. The way the model works is it takes all of the ground.
Yeah.
And, and as you said, it doesn't recognize boundaries in there. Some of that flow, one of the things that we were looking at and might share with you is that, is the time lapse. And sometimes looking at the time lapse, showing how the storm floods and how it goes back out reveals a lot to you. A lot of that flow is actually going south and not north-
Okay.
-into the system. And we can see that as we watch the model run.
Okay.
Trusty Dahlman, I think it might make sense for us to follow up with Kennelworth just to get a, an accounting of the work that they've already done on their side.
Yeah.
And there's also a significant difference between our communities in that we are a separate sewer community and they are a combined sewer.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and that gets into water quality issues. We can solve water quality at Elder, but in a big storm event, you know, there's, there's outfalls in Kennelworth as well. The other thing I was wondering, it looks like there might be potential for additional storage in the village-owned parking lot at Indian Hill Train Station.
He showed it.
Yeah, that was on the map.
That's it. That's a big area. That's a big stream.
But do you really, I mean, you could hold it without having to pump it, right?
Right. You're talking about this area right here?
Yeah.
Yep. And that, as I was saying, is if, if we hold all of this area on the west side of the railroad by doing this, disconnecting the underpass, I will need this storage and this pumping in concert so that, and I'd really love to be able to get the whole area into storage. That way you don't depend on the pumping.
Okay.
But they would definitely have to go hand in hand. If I find that, that is not gonna be viable, you're gonna have flooding issues, your pump station fails, and you've got bigger problems, I'm not gonna go down that route. We'll keep, make sure that there's an emergency outfall for it.
Okay. And it doesn't look like you would need the potential area of North Shore Country Day potential storage.
Too high.
Because there could be an opportunity-
Way up there, though.
That's way up high.
No, I know it is, but I just didn't know.
But I will say that little park pocket part right there-
Right.
-might have some benefit. It's small, I get it, but it actually, the storm sewer here is only about four, maybe five feet deep. That's a pretty good opportunity to offload some storage at that location.
Well, and then across Green Bay Road, too, right there. Yeah. Okay.
But we have looked at the scroll, and from a topographic standpoint, it doesn't-
Yeah, that's not where the water is.
We do have to be a little bit careful those, on the east side of there, you start playing around with Union Pacific Railroad land-
Yeah, I know.
-which becomes nightmare.
Nightmare. And then for some of the folks who may be tuning in, although I'm not sure who's gonna be tuning in now that the presidential debate's about to start, what, can we, can you go over again, the, it was, was, did we have a 500-year flood event at any point? Was that in 2007? Was it only a 100-year event? Can we just kind of go through those again?
Do you remember, Jim? I don't, it was over a 100-year-
It was a little over.
Trying to show the figure.
The 2011 one?
Well, there was 2007, 2008, 2011.
They were, they were close to a 100-year event. It wasn't, we weren't anywhere near a 500-year.
Okay, all right.
It was a little over 100. I think one of those was a little over, but it was, for modeling purposes, 100 years.
Right.
Pretty close to what we had.
Yeah, that was a projection. This is the 100-year event right in here, and the projection out, 2011 was, is right there. So it's, it was more than the 100-year, but it wasn't, it was not-
Less than the 500. Okay, got it. And that, that's my last question is, you know, a lot of this modeling is based on 100-year. Are we concerned that that's, I mean-
Sufficient?
Yeah.
That's the level of service discussion we have to have. There are points in a, in a study in which you could make it as big as you possibly, as you imaginably want to, and you just won't be able to grab an event like that.
And, oh, I'm sorry. And then just a follow-up question. When you said water quality, that means that whatever outfall we look at, improvements to that, we'd be looking to somehow capture settlement and improve the water quality through all these proj, I mean, I know, we know that, but for the benefit of anybody who's listening.
Yeah.
It's not just dumping, you know, raw runoff into Lake Michigan.
The regulatory agencies-
Right.
-are gonna require that.
Yeah.
As part of the permit.
And the other thing that we're also making sure of is, we don't want to wait till we get down to the bottom of the hill to treat it. We're looking for opportunities up in the watershed to capture, do treatment up in the watershed so that even by the time we get down near our outfalls, we've already taken care of it. You may know, on the west side, that's a lot of what we did on the west side. The, the storage facilities are actually lower than the outfalls, so they capture and hold water back. That first flush of polluted water, we then put through a very simple treatment facility and significantly improve the water quality before it leaves the storage facility. That's the kind of thing we want to continue to do here, treat it all the way through the watershed.
Just two quick things. So we don't have, in general, I guess this is for, for you guys, the same property damage issues we have on the, had on the west side. In general, we're not seeing that. It's more underpasses, streets.
The scale is not the same-
Okay.
-as the west side, for sure, or the scope.
I wouldn't try to tell the people on Fuller Lane.
Exactly.
Yeah, Fuller Lane is a river when it really gets bad. So they're in the process
of looking through all the data that we had from those events to get a sense of who flooded, what property damage events and their locations. Now, not everybody flooded for the same reason.
Right.
Some had sanitary backup because so much water was standing in the streets or on their front lawns that it infiltrated into their sanitary system, or they had a backup or something like that. So I would expect the type of flooding, when we revisit that data, you're gonna see sanitary issues, you're gonna see private property drainage issues, and then you're gonna see some that are caused that, you know, should be handled by our systems. But it's not gonna be the magnitude that you had on the west side. But that data is part of their work to follow up on. Because at one point on the west side, we used to plot where all the property damages were.
Yeah.
We'll be able to do that again.
Since the last time we talked, just had the first bite at the apple, looking at this, a little less than a week ago, I think that, I've always thought that Willow, Elder, Tagle is pretty interesting, to keep it away from as much as you can from the swimmers and the beach. So I, I think we, it wasn't, at least we don't know it obviously now, but prohibitively expensive to do that. Yeah.
That, that would be pretty basic. It's just putting one pipe below the other one. So until that pipe fills up to a certain level, then it starts to overflow out to Elder. That would mean significant amount of the day-to-day storm events would just go to Willow. We've also been asked the question, can you, why don't you take it all to Willow? But Willow is limited in, in that right-of-way space, and I just don't think it's a manageable system. It, I think it's much more manageable when we're using both of those outfalls.
Yeah, that's great.
And keep in mind, too, there's also the Union Pacific Railroad outfall that goes through there-
That's right.
-as well. So there's a separation that has to be maintained. So you, we have limited real estate in there to put a very, very large single pipe through there.
Okay. And I guess I was looking at the, do we have a kind of a bounce back? I know, I always look at this at places, it's like, oh my God, there's water sitting. Well, in 12 hours, it's gone. So I guess my question, kind of a realistic view of, there's water, what, what's realistic? You know, we can either spend a trillion dollars and get it so, you know, it's dry as Arizona, or you can, there's a reasonable bounce back time, what you, what we accept in our village that, so we can try and keep costs, you know, protect the property, protect the streets, protect, you know, emergency vehicles, but keep costs at a reasonable level that we're not trying to solve the world's problems. If it's gonna bounce back within what's acceptable, 10 hours, eight hours, six hours, whatever it is.
I think that gets to Mike's comment about it being a balancing exercise.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, if there's a little thing, you can live with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. That's good. Very good.
Mike, you had mentioned coming west of the railroad, picking some stuff up, and then going, going east at Willow. Do we have a pipe going through at that point?
At Willow, we don't. At, what is that road, Jim?
Sunset.
I think it's north, the one north of Sunset.
Uh.
Yeah, does it go to Elder? Yes, that's correct. It goes across at Elder. You have an existing storm sewer that goes under the railroad tracks from west to east at Elder.
At Elder?
Yes.
Okay. That would be the one that would ultimately be the Willow Road if you took that, that route?
What it, what it'll do is take, you'll take load off of the Winnetka Avenue underpass because I'd take a whole area and send it north, but it's still gonna get to Elder. All of that still goes to Elder. There's another option in here to intercede quicker, like somewhere at Wood Lawn.
Mm-hmm.
But I kind of like getting down to the bottom of the hill because I can put in that splitting structure-
Yeah.
-that is much more effective there.
I guess the bottom line is, I, I wasn't here when it was all happening, but I understand that the permitting of getting under the railroad tracks was nightmarish, right? Impossible. So maybe we shouldn't make plans that require us to do anything with UP right now. I mean, that might save us five or six years.
Yeah.
Others?
Well, I guess on that point, though, if we already have a crossing, it may not be-
Then we're golden.
Well, you have to expand it, right? But that's an easier discussion, do you think?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Expanding something that we have versus something new-
Yeah.
-is an easier discussion. We can always do general maintenance.
And then just so I understand, you said there's two outfalls at Willow, one that's designated as the Union Pacific outfall, and then how, how wide is that?
That one, I believe, is a 24-inch pipe.
Okay.
And what that does is that picks up when they, when they lowered the railroad tracks, they put in a storm sewer system that actually splits in a couple places, and it runs back to one point, which is Willow Road, and then it progresses east, and it's, there's nothing else connected to it. It literally just takes the water from the Lower Green Bay Trail area, gets it to there, and then heads and discharges out. So when you look at Willow Road, it's located kind of on the north side of Willow Road, east of Sheridan. It primarily runs that way. And then our existing 12-inch pipe is just located to the south.
So a 12-inch pipe and a 24-inch pipe at Willow Road right now?
Currently discharging there now, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Jump in. All right, well, go ahead, Bob.
Back on the issue of the 100-year, 50-year, you know, that you can balance and so on. So the, the west side is all 100-year. Everything is 100-year. This is less intense per, per Rob's comment there. Scope is not quite as large, the damage not as large. So what you'd come back with is sort of a, some areas might be, what, 25-year, 50-year? I mean, what, what could we expect here? And to Rob Apitos' point, what does that mean in terms of the time of a project, the cost of a project, as you go to 100 to 50-year? I mean, is it magnitudes of less invasive work?
Right, right. The, the cost, the invasiveness of it, very hard to tell. But it'll come out in the modeling. If I, so we will say, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put in this size pipe, let's see if it works. Ah, that didn't work, I'm gonna make it three sizes larger. Well, it didn't do a whole lot. Lowered some flooding by six inches, not worthwhile. But keep in mind, even on the west side, we are, we are handling a 100-year event, but it doesn't mean the roads are not going to flood. It is still set up so that there is flooding in the roadways. The goal was, none of it's on private property, and it's no deeper than six inches in the roadway, so that there's always passability and there's no impact to private property. So there's still an allowance to have some flooding in the roadways, and that's where the balance comes in. So then your question is, well, then what level of service is that? Well, for me, 100-year means, I, all of my flooding is staying within the right-of-way, and all the roadways are passable. So there isn't any private property. But you might get a 25-year event, and it's bone dry. Or a 10-year event, and it's bone dry.
And then as you go north to what we talked about earlier, perhaps some of those areas are being, accommodating a 50-year event or a 20, because you don't have the intensity of the flooding? Is that-
You're correct. Right. And that's, as I said, the level of service. What does the village want to live with at the end of the day? And if it means doubling the size of infrastructure to be able to get the last six inches, that might not be worthwhile. It might not be economic.
Right. That's where I was gonna do, what's practical.
Yeah.
Got it.
But even with the context of what Mike was saying about the west side, even if you had some water on the street under, given storm, it's gonna drain much faster. It's not gonna sit there for two days or 12 hours, right? It's gonna move, depending upon the conditions of the storm.
Well, and I was just gonna say, that's consistent with current design standards for new communities. You are designing your roadway system to hold water. It's just, you know, it's free, you know, detention, right? I mean, that is the standard.
It's a free board.
Yeah.
Yeah, most communities, anywhere from four to six inches of free board coming out. So a lot of towns that have B612 curbs, which is just a six-inch tall, it's to hold it in the roadway, but it's low enough that you wouldn't stop a Prius driving through it.
Okay, well, why don't we open this up for public comment? Would anybody like to share their thoughts on this? Come on up, John.
Yes, John Root. I'm wondering about PCBs and- Yeah, yes. My, my question is concerning PCBs and the IEPAs' total maximum daily loads that you're allowed to go ahead and put in the lake. And are these treatment facilities gonna knock it down to 26 milligrams per liter that's required by the IEPA? And how are you gonna deal with the MWRD on this, too? And how are you going to deal with the MWRD on this, too?
I mean, so I think what we would do is, once we have a final design, we'll work with those regulatory agencies to see what their levels are for these types of specific outfalls, or any modifications for requirements that they're going to make of the village as part of the design.
Okay. So it'll be interactive between you and the agencies, is that it?
Yes.
And then what about other pollutants, again, that you're probably not going to be capturing with this? Oils, dissolved chemicals, and so forth. Are you looking at that, testing that, to see what type of treatment you'd have to do? And I'm talking specifically about Elder and the fact that you're putting out stormwater there on a public beach, and to make that safe. How do you make that safe?
So that is a big part of what we're looking at, is the water quality. As Jim noted, it's going to be a discussion between the regulatory agencies. I can tell you that the facilities that we have put in on the west side, very similar to what we'd be looking at on the east side, captures all floatables, oils, greases. That's what gets captured in those treatment facilities. Beyond that, we talk about things like suspended solids and phosphorus levels and those kinds of things. That's where we would be talking with the, with the regulators about what those levels are. But I will always fall back on the fact that, right now, there is zero treatment. We know going in and doing this is going to significantly improve the water quality as it exists today, significantly.
One other question. What about putting that stormwater pipe out in Elder, further out to the lake, you know, to dilute it, to make it safe for, for swimmers and so on?
Actually, the, that's one of the ideas that the Park District has, as part of their conceptual ones, but I would, I'd have to let them address, as part of their design, what's going to be the most appropriate.
But again, coordination on that. I mean, they're going out 240 feet for their breakwater that they want to go ahead and put those pipes in. The, the current pier is 170 feet. And again, on E. coli, that wasn't doing the job in terms of dilution, you know, for the health of the community. And I would think Strand would be in a better position, and, and you, for calculating how far that ought to go out, not, not the, the Park Department.
Again, it would just, it would be the same conversations that the Park District would be having for the regulatory agencies. We would partner, because we would be involved in those discussions, to see what the approaches and what level are those regulatory agencies trying to get them to meet.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Others? Ted, are you speaking?
Yes, I was just having, you know, pain. It's okay, just helps you know you're alive. Hi, Ted Winchell. So I had three comments or thoughts, suggestions, whatever you want to call them. I'm going to go from smallest to biggest. So the first one is that, you know, I feel like part of the problem that Winnetka has is of its own making. By that, I mean, back in, I think it was like 98, they put out the Village Engineering Guidelines, which essentially switched stormwater from a community-wide or subdivision-wide kind of problem to a lot-by-lot problem. And it required that new construction, you know, capture its water and divert it, and ultimately just put it right into the storm sewer. And so like in our situation, back, you know, 15, 12, 14 years ago, we had an engineer, and they came up with this plan, and the plan required that all, you know, everything had to be sloped correctly, and so we turned this lot that was just part of the neighborhood into like a funnel, and that was supposed to dump into like a little storm drain, and then it was supposed to go out. And the calculated diameter of the pipe was going to be one and a, was like 1.25 inches. And of course, that wasn't allowed because the pipe is so small that it would always clog, and so it had to be a two-inch diameter minimum pipe, and of course, that increases the flow by a, by, you know, the radius to the fourth power. And essentially, what these engineering guidelines do is turn each individual house into a, instead of a sheet flow, delayed time of concentration environment, into a funnel with a much lower time of concentration, and it's still going on today. The house across the alley is doing the same thing. I see the, the divots on the sides, I, you know, they have a, they've put in pipes. I mean, it's, it seems to me that as a first step, the village should reconsider its engineering guidelines to delay at the very start with any new construction, the time of concentration, to stop adding more flow in the early part of a storm. But I don't know why we don't consider that. I brought it up before. So then on a bigger issue, I think there's lots of opportunities when we talk about green infrastructure. And I'm troubled that we don't consider them. So I saw the picture, and I saw the permeable payers and stuff, and yes, it is a clay base here, but that doesn't mean that the water can't go somewhere and be held temporarily until it, at the very least, evaporates. We have miles, like, I'm going to say tens of miles, because I don't think it's 100, tens of miles of roadway that could be as, they need to be replaced, could be turned into permeable surfaces. Studies from the state of Florida have shown that interstates made with permeable concrete, permeable asphalt and concrete are stable for years without a problem. So we could create over time a massive amount of storage that may not go anywhere, but it would eventually evaporate. And at the same time, we have tons of parkway space, which is theoretically village-owned. I had to ask, but we have a small depression in our parkway, and we have plants. You know, the plants don't just trap the rainwater, they, well, they trap the rainwater, and it doesn't, it never leaves, right? Because the plants absorb it, eventually it evaporates, it doesn't even enter the watershed. And so the village has an opportunity to create tons of like bioswales and tons of, you know, native plantings that could mitigate those early flows of water. And then it finally brings us to the largest issue, which is, you all may, may or may not remember, you know, about 15 years ago, there was this bill that had been introduced in the Congress about, that would have required every bit of flow into Lake Michigan to be treated. It would have prohibited any untreated discharges into Lake Michigan or any of the Great Lakes. Now, yes, that eventually did die, and it didn't go anywhere, but it seems to me that the way the world is progressing, that eventually something like that might again rear its head. And I think the village should be proactive in thinking about how will they future-proof whatever they do, so that if, all of a sudden, five or 10 years from now, Congress says no untreated stormwater of any kind can go into Lake Michigan, we won't be stuck going back and redesigning everything, but maybe just have the opportunity to add a little bit and take care of that problem.
Thank you, Ted. Anybody else?